Good afternoon, everyone. Councilmember Dustin Hillis, Chair of the Public Safety and Legal Administration Committee, thank you for joining us this afternoon. I want to call this meeting at order. I've been joined by my colleagues to my far right, Councilmember Antonio Lewis, followed by Councilmember Andrea Boone, and to my left, Councilmember Mary Norwood. We do constitute a quorum. I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
And we will be treating one paper as a walk-in, even though, because it's not on the agenda, it was a paper that came back from the full council. Can't hear me? Okay, well, my mic is on, so it can...
They can hear you on the speakers.
What's that?
They can hear you on the speakers.
Okay. Are they fixing the speakers in here? Okay. So anyways, so we will be treating that paper as a walk-in, since, for whatever reason, it did not appear on our agenda. So I will make a motion to approve those... The agenda has been seconded by Councilmember Norwood, so please prepare the vote.
Four yeas, zero nays. The agenda is adopted.
Yeah, still have no audio. I'm not moving the meeting forward until we get some audio in here. This is ridiculous. And is there something wrong with... Does anything work? Is there something wrong with the voting system, or...
Testing, testing. You can suspend us. It's a... Oh. You can request... You can request... What's your name? Okay. Because he's going to let him do it. Okay. Um, go ahead and add your... Because he knows how he is, too. No. Testing. Testing. Testing.
Our voting system was rebooted, too. We good to go there?
Yes. Yes, Mr. Chair?
So we have also been joined, in our 15 minutes of waiting on our audio, by Councilmember Waits. I will now make a motion to approve the minutes of the prior meeting. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, my Councilmember Boone. Please prepare the vote.
The vote is open. Mr. Chair, may you have a voice vote, please?
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, five yeas, zero nays. Minutes are approved. I'll move on to public comment. First up is Ms. Henri Jordan.
May not your spirit of God, everyone that's here, be merciful unto me, O God, for man would swallow me up. He fighting daily oppresses me, Isaiah 56, Chapter 1, verse. First David contrasts his threatening enemies with his faithful God. James' scripts comes on my roof to oppress me with his agenda and not Jesus' agenda, to help the homeless, calling on Jesus, not to be oppressed and to develop their Christ-given gifts for deliverance from the plan of Satan. To the one we are the Savior of death unto death, and to the other, the Savior of life unto life. And who is sufficient for these things? Sec. Corinthians 2, Chapter 16, verse. The human race divided into two categories: those are life unto life, and those unto death unto death. Those that disobey Jesus ask for death, and those that obey Jesus ask for life. Trust not in oppression, and become not vain in robbery. If riches increase, set not your heart upon them, Psalm 62 and 10. At least five now describe God's protection: rock, salvation, defense, glory, and refuge. James' script is coming on my roof to make me work for his squad of rites, and taking me to court to make, to take care of his twenty-plus children. To take these actions, to ask for death, because he's a man, and I support his horrid actions. But if anybody buy not for his own, especially for those of his own house, he is denied the faith, and is worse than an infidel, 1 Timothy 5, Chapter 8, verse. He is normally worse than an infidel unbeliever, for even unbelievers generally assume responsibility for aged parents. Jesus says, James' children are not my responsibility. He comes on my roof because I have not invited him into my house. How can he help a man be a Christ-like husband or father, to be a Christ-like father? Examples you have to set when you leading people. I have to try to be that leader myself, to fight against sin in me, around me, and in others, in the name of Jesus, by the power of God.
Thank you. Before I call the next speaker, are we keeping time, or do I need to keep time on my stopwatch? Because it wasn't showing the last...
Here now, yes.
Okay.
Devin Franklin. Good afternoon. Good afternoon, councilpersons, and Devin Franklin, Movement Policy Council for the Southern Center for Human Rights. I'm here today to speak to you all on the topic for which I've been updating you all for the past several weeks. About nine months ago, myself and members of the Community Over Cages Alliance engaged in some back-and-forth with members of this subcommittee and the council at large over the effectiveness of the leasing of the ACDC facility to Fulton County to help alleviate its overcrowding issues. About three weeks ago, I first came to try to inquire, but also to provide updates as to the effectiveness of that lease, which, in sum, was nailed. At that point in time, roughly sixty-ish men had been transferred from Wright Street, a facility that held... A facility that held several hundred men who were being housed and sleeping on floors. And I was concerned that the legislation that this body undertook was a matter of political expediency and convenience, more so than real addressing of concerns that would help remove people from dangerous conditions. Two weeks ago, before this subcommittee, I came and I spoke about issues with, again, the effectiveness of that lease. I think the number of persons in custody from ACDC, from Fulton County who were housed in ACDC, had risen to about eighty. But we also learned through questioning from Councilmember Lewis that there were racial disparities, significant racial disparities of the number of black persons housed when shown in comparison to the population of the city of Atlanta. Atlanta has a population per the 2020 census, which is roughly about 50% black. Yet, I believe, the number, if correct me, Mr. Lewis, was about 85% black that were being housed inside of ACDC at that point in time. Today, I am here to, again, revisit the ineffectiveness of this lease, as of today. And I'm not sure, Mr. Hillis, if this is something that you're aware of, as co-chair of the committee that oversaw the jail population review committee. The number, again, is around in the sixties. But more disturbing, from what I've learned in speaking with people, there have been a number of persons in Fulton County custody who have been transferred to facilities that are not ACDC. There are about 28 men who have been transferred to Oakone County. I can't tell you, as a former public defender, how inconvenient and ineffective an attorney would be having to drive to Athens to speak to a client to represent them. There are additionally persons now being housed in Newton, Fayette County, Forestlife County, Gwinnett County, Spalding County, all places where people are being taken instead of ACDC, because, as members of the alliance have told you all, Fulton County does not have the staff to safely house people in ACDC. Additionally, in the time since I last spoke to you, a man died in Fulton County custody at Wright Street Jail last week. A deputy was arrested for inappropriate sexual conduct. That's the part that made the news. There's a lot more stuff to it that people haven't heard of yet that involves the general safety of persons in custody, and that is to speak that this deputy's incident was found out a few months after another deputy had been dismissed for unlocking cells and allowing other persons in custody to attack different people. So again, I am asking you all if you actually care about the safety of people in Fulton Look into this. Wow. Appreciate your time. Thank you.
Curtis Harrison. Jesus, did y'all hear that? You can start the time. It's okay. For one, I want to say this, that I ain't no way hate anybody on the council. You know, I got the love of Christ in my heart. It's just the fact that there's so much... Did you hear what that young man just said? And that's a young man. You just hear what he just said? Now, I know the law. I know the law. I talk to lawyers every day. Did y'all just hear what this young man just said right here? People opening up jails... Officers opened up jail cells so they can attack someone else in the jail. Now, to say that person was related to me, that this guy just opened up the door and he'll attack. And he called me on the phone and said, the officer just opened up the jail so someone can take me inside of a jail. And that's my brother. I'm gonna leave that right there. Now, homelessness in Atlanta, Georgia, is really... It's like this here. It looks good here, but down here, it's terrible. I'm in Buckhead, you know, your district, Ms. Norwood, shook, your district, where people walking through parks with dogs. Well, I'm going to be specific, white guys walking through parks with dogs with no lease, kids playing. But y'all don't think that's an issue? A lady died by dog attacks down in, I think it was Arlington, about a year ago. You got grown white men walking with pit bulls, big old dogs, in the Franklin Allen Park. But y'all don't seem to think that's a problem? Now, if you that racist, if you're that racist, see, now, if I got to defend myself, I'm capable of defending myself. These people walking around parks with dogs in broad daylight, kids playing at the park. Y'all don't think that's an issue? But some, when it comes to that, just here, you think that it's okay, just because this man is a... I don't care if he owned a ninety apartments in Buckhead, I don't care if he walking down the street. These people are walking in the park with their dogs off a lease. I want to take a lot of time... I want to take all my time to talk about this. You know why? Because, one, a lady got killed by a dog attack. Matter of fact, she was a mail carrier. She got attacked by six dogs, and they killed her. But y'all don't think it's a serious issue? And if I'm walking with my girlfriend, my mom, my sister, and these dogs attack me, sir, these dogs attack my family member, I'm gonna leave that right there. Now, I'm saying this one more time. I know God. I know who God is getting ready to do. God ain't allow evil to persist for so much, so long. The Bible says, the Bible says, if money is your God, if a city's money is their God, that city will soon come to ruin. Like I said before, I seen Atlanta underwater. Write that down.
Greg Pridgen. Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, Councilmember Hillis, to the distinguished members of this body, to include my former intern, Councilmember Antonio Lewis, to my colleague, my friend, who I've worked with for millions of years, the Honorable Mary Norwood, to one of my other mentees, Ms. Andrea Boone, and one of my new friends, Councilmember Keisha Waits. I rise today on behalf of savvy provisions owned by Mr. Paul Nair. This is a boutique grocery store chain, similar to, say, a Whole Foods, but much, much smaller. And we're simply asking for a waiver of a distance requirement, but in due res... In respect to Councilmember Alex Wan, with whom this store will fall in his district, and Councilmember Wes Morland, Councilmember Wan would like to see the paper held in this committee. Our desire was to move it forward today with no recommendation, but in... With all due respect to him, we'll follow that lead, if you will, rather than asking... Could it be a month before we get back to this committee? It'd be a long time. But we are willing to follow his lead, so we're asking you to hold the paper in the committee today.
Juan Robinson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairperson. Good afternoon, board. Commissioner Boone, I'm sorry, Councilmember Boone, Councilmember Lewis, Councilmember Waits, Ms. Norwood, we have to consider public safety just more than what we've been doing. You guys got to consider people being priced out of their homes, people not being able to afford to live in the city. That's a serious public safety issue. Our children being on the streets, not being in school, that's a public safety issue, man. I come down here alone sometime to speak because I choose peace instead of violence, you know what I'm saying? Instead of me bringing young folks down here screaming at you guys and making y'all afraid, and the police not letting us in the building, that's not the way to do things. But it seem like that's the only way that some people respond, is when you come down here with so many people in a course of violence, like what they're doing over there in the training facility, you know what I'm saying? They got everybody's attention because of what they're doing. And that's not the way that I want to do business, but it seem like we forgetting the whole bunch of stuff in Atlanta that we've been fighting for, for years. Ms. Boone, when your father was alive, this the same stuff they was fighting for. We fighting for this same stuff in 2023. You know what I'm saying? Mr. Lewis, one of your favorite quotes, "And my God who raised me, unbossed and unbought." And Mr. Hosea Williams, it's the same stuff he was fighting for. A man elected as he was locked up, fighting for the same injustice that we fighting for this stuff, man, fifty, sixty years later. Like, why do people have to continue to come down here and beg and plead for human rights issues? The same stuff that they fought for, man? Why do we still have to do that? You guys are on public safety for a reason, and we can't keep saying we're going to look into it. You guys can implement this right here and right now, because it's your duty. You are in this position for a reason today. You are in this position for a reason. I know y'all care, but we got to put, boost the action, man. We can't just keep hearing the speakers cry out, seeing what's going on out here, man. Like, it's terrible, man. Like, I'm serious, it's terrible. I just lost a little nephew onto the jail system. Five years he just got Friday because he committed a crime. I had to choose whether or not to speak... I had to choose whether or not to speak up for him or just let nature take its course because he was wrong in what he was doing. Shot at a police officer over on Bankhead. I can't come down here and speak to y'all against that and then speak for my nephew for shooting at Atlanta police officer. I can't stand for that. So I had to just stay out of it and let God do what he had to do to him and give him his five years because, hey, he deserved it because he shot at Atlanta police officer. It's serious out here, man. It affects all our family neighborhoods, and we gotta do something about it, man. And public safety is where it starts. Thank you, Chairperson, for letting me go over.
All right. That concludes our public comment for this afternoon. We'll move on to our presentations. First up is Atlanta Police Department's Monthly Update, Deputy Chief Timothy Peake. Welcome.
Good afternoon, Chairman Hillis, and all other Councilmembers Waits, Lewis, Boone, and Norwood. We bring greetings to you, Deputy Chief Timothy Peake, Atlanta Police Department, here to conduct the monthly presentation for the Atlanta Police Department. As we move forward with the slide, our focus this week is on our Crime Week 11. What we'd like to bring to your attention on this particular week is if we look in the lower right corner as to where we're flat for the actual year for this reporting period, zero percent overall crime, but what's of significance as we look farther up in there where we focus on our crimes against persons being homicide, rape, and robbery. There's an overall twenty-two percent reduction in violent Part One crimes as it pertains to crimes against persons. Homicide significantly has a fifty-three percent reduction from this period at the same time last year. Our rapes are at a sixty-five percent decrease, and then our aggravated assaults is at eighteen percent. They're at an eighteen percent decrease. So we're certainly thankful for the direction that we're seeing in our violent crime. The focus is continuing to be on our illegal guns, our gangs, and then our narcotics because that nexus all fits in together. And then if we can focus collectively on all those three, we're seeing the reductions that we're seeing at this particular point. As we look farther down, we also focus on our property crimes. There's a four percent overall increase, but what's significant about that, and we'll look at it as we move forward with the other slides, well, we'll just look right here. We're seeing a forty-four percent increase with our auto thefts. And so there'll be another slide coming up to where we'll take a deeper dive to look right into that particular one. Again, as we move to Slide Two, this just highlights again, as I just spoke about with the violent crime, that's our focus. We don't want anyone killed. We don't want any issues of rape, aggravated assault. We don't want any issues, period, for crime, but unfortunately, we do have to deal with it. But we're gonna keep the things that we have in place to continue to drive those numbers down. And again, we look at it, we're looking at the forty-four percent increase in those motor vehicle thefts. In those forty-four, what we want to look at, what's significant about that forty-four percent increase of those really deals specifically with the Kias and Hyundai's? That's been a thorn in our sides because it's been on in social media, it's been throughout the regular media as well, as there are ways that you can steal those vehicles pretty simple with a USB drive to go right in and break that column and get in and get into those vehicles and drive off with them. Overwhelmingly, we recover most of those vehicles that are stolen, but it don't stop the actual actions. So we've certainly been dealing with a lot of those two automakers trying to come up with some results that would stop that, and so we'll continue to have those conversations. As we move forward, just really wanted to share, this one is a narcotics operation that took place in southwest Atlanta. We're purposely leaving the address and those that are involved out of the actual slide because there are some ongoing investigations. But getting this particular information, our narcotics unit was able to partner with our Apex Unit as well as the GBI to go in to get the complaints and investigate those and have a successful service of the search warrant that yielded eighteen hundred sixty-seven grams of cocaine, methamphetamine, fentanyl, which is very dangerous, marijuana, heroin, ecstasy, and three weapons, one rifle and two handguns and just under $2,000 in U.S. currency. Those are the types of things that we're constantly seeing as we're serving search warrants throughout our city, getting the information, methodically taking care of those investigations to ensure that all Ts are crossed and all Is are dotted so that we're able to successfully serve it without any harm or injury to any. Two people were arrested in this particular situation. One was a convicted felon, five cycles, and then the other was not a convicted felon, still with about five cycles. So continuing to work in there, getting those, getting the leads that are coming through our narcotics unit and other ways throughout our field operations or any other entity. I know there are often times that we receive complaints from this body as well, and when we get them and conduct those investigations, we want to do all that we can and move it forward. Moving forward with the other presentation, this is somewhat what I just spoke to about Kias and Hyundai's. So as you look to the left, that's Kia and Hyundai only. When we look at 2022 last year, this time from January first to where we are now, March 27th, there were only forty-nine vehicles that were stolen that were identified with Kia and/or Hyundai. Once the information went out through social media and the regular media and the method of stealing those vehicles got out, you look at this particular point of period now, four hundred and nineteen in the same period. That's an increase of about three hundred and seventy cars, all because of that information getting out and also because of the flaw that's in those particular systems. So what have we done about it? We've had a lot of conversation with Kia, Hyundai, working closely with NCIB and another number of entities. And so we've been working with them to deploy our clubs so that we can look at the people that are living within the city of Atlanta who's been a victim and perhaps have those vehicles in their possession, going back and looking, trying to figure out, how do we issue them that club for, number one, to keep those vehicles from being stolen? But the other part, too, is working with the manufacturer and coordinating something specific to Atlanta so that we can get the fix that's been released now. The automakers have come up with the fix. It's a reprogramming of the system and how we're able to have a better place and process so we can get our residents within the city of Atlanta to be able to move up, not, I shouldn't say move up on the chart, but to have an easier way for them to get those vehicles, particularly our senior residents who don't have a lot of wherewithal to get out and get those, looking at how we partner with them to get those vehicles to the shop or the shop to them so that we can get those programs done, reprogrammings done, and hopefully we're able to impact those numbers based off of those steps. All of them are ongoing right now, and we look forward to dealing with that issue. Again, as you look over on the right side, there's the overall forty-four percent increase, but you've noticed a smaller increase, six hundred to eight sixty-one overall, but the bigger increase is the forty-nine to four nineteen. So if those vehicles weren't a part of our auto theft issue, then we would be looking at an overall reduction in auto thefts as well as crime across the board with the city of Atlanta. Moving forward, still in the thought process of auto theft, so this is a location down in Zone Three, 2553 Jonesboro Road. So it's a lot that allows people to store items on it. We got some information that went out to that location, and we was able to conduct an investigation on that lot. It was evident, we were able to have a conversation with the property owner to get a lot of information, and once we saw the first bit of information, we had to go back and get a search warrant so we can go through that property. Located on that property was eleven stolen vehicles in all types of disarray. You see the pictures of what's happening. Along with that, there was a large number of containers. In those containers, there was one container that was full of N-95 masks, another container that was full of stolen HVAC units, another container full of other items that were stolen from the Savannah Port. Looking at that particular situation, going, conducting the investigation and finding out what's happening, why is the actual, why are the things there? We were able to determine that there were stolen goods from several jurisdictions, just to name a few, DeKalb County, Gwinnett County, the city of Kennesaw, South Fulton City, Cobb County, Atlanta, and Savannah. So it's an ongoing investigation. Ultimately, the property owner himself stated that people lease space, and he allows them to store items there, so we're having to go back and look and get that information to find out who's doing what and how they're able to come into contact with all of the stolen merchandise. But a lot of good work is being done. What's bad about this situation is when you're going into a situation like such, it's tedious work, requires a lot of resources to come in, conduct the investigations, get that information, and to move it forward and grow your law enforcement network to be successful with identifying those issues and putting a stop to it, moving forward with the participation of the other entities involved. Moving forward, here's another one, as we talk about the entering autos. So when you look at the entering autos and you look at your auto thefts, that represents nearly fifty percent of all Atlanta crime. That's why the Clean Car Campaign is so important. If vehicles are in the place, you know, it would really truly be able to, if we could get the Clean Car Campaign, stop leaving keys, stop doing things, making a mental note of what we're doing, certainly not blaming any victims, but just trying to be smarter about how we move about, we could really have a greater impact on crime. This particular case was a traffic stop. No tag on the vehicle, driver had no license, passenger had open container. So simply, it's just a simple case. But instead of stopping right there, the officer chose to continue the investigation, having an opportunity to interview the people and finding out what's going on. The gentleman had multiple warrants, and so looking at it, found out that he was a prolific entering auto suspect, had five entering autos in the city of Atlanta, three incidents on federal probation, and additional charges that are still ongoing related to this investigation. So while we look at traffic stops and we think that they're just a simple stop that we can pull up, it's just routine, we'll ride a ticket and move on. What we try to train our officers to do is to look deeper at that stop, have a conversation and see where this investigation is able to go. Ultimately, we were able to get Mr. Daniel off the street, and he was certainly, again, a prolific entering auto suspect. So if we could keep him from coming on to the street and doing all that we're doing, then we can lower those numbers as well. Moving forward with our Repeat Offender Initiative. So this particular chart, as you look at the breakdown of the categories of weapons, violent crime, narcotics, property crime, and of course, other crimes, this particular report was representative of fifteen people. Out of those fifteen people, there were about three hundred and forty arrests, which gives you an average of about twenty-two number of arrests. The average age of the people that we were dealing with is the age of forty-three, and the number of felony convictions were seven. So it continues to be a challenge of us ensuring that we work alongside Fulton County District Attorney's Office and all of the other entities in the Repeat Offender Tracking Unit to ensure that we get the information, the proper information delivered to the judges on the front end so that when we deliver a person for prosecution, that they'll have the best information that's needed to ensure that they get the right amount of bond set. Unfortunately, we see too many times where people will go to jail and unfortunately get released only to come back out and continue the same crime spree that they had prior to being arrested. One individual on this particular report had been arrested sixty-one times. Another one had a felony conviction of nineteen times. So those are the challenges that we have to continue to deal with. But we remain steadfast and focused in what we're doing in the area of public safety and ensuring that we're methodical in that we are removing not just people off the street, but the right people off the street so that we could be more successful and keep our streets safe. As we move to the next slide, not is it just about enforcement only, but it's also about partnerships. Partnerships, it's about our children, it's about mentoring and trying to have a better angle on how we're able to affect and change the trajectory of our kids. So just a couple of slides here on the left, we had an opportunity where Harper Archer Elementary School has been one of our schools that we've adopted, and we're going into that school on a regular basis, reading to the kids, mentoring the kids, and growing our relationships with the community. We've done things such as pizza parties and all other things, just get in there and change the mindset of those children and let them know that we want to be here as a source for them, and we don't want anyone afraid of us not being able to communicate. When people are in need, we want them to be able to reach out to a police officer, and the way that we do that is by growing those relationships. Additionally, on the right, we had a wonderful, outstanding coffee with a cop over on Cortland, Cortland Street and Cortland Avenue, and so we had a large turnout of children. Every entity, every law enforcement agency that was represented in the city of Atlanta was present, and those are the types of things that we continue to try to reach out and strive to ensure that we, again, make the same impact with the regular community as well as our children. So those were just two events that we really wanted to highlight. That's where we see our biggest satisfaction, if I could say, of the heart, to really get out and help people and to mentor our children. We'll close out with the final, and we thank you for your partnership and your words. And as we look right now, we're continuing to see our numbers grow with Connect Atlanta. So at this particular point, we've had about twenty-eight thousand, twenty-eight thousand one hundred fifty-seven connections in Connect Atlanta, of which twelve thousand nine hundred and thirty-four, nearly thirteen thousand, have registered their cameras, and then fifteen thousand two hundred and twenty-three have integrated their cameras. So we've constantly seen time and time again where we have gone out, responded to a crime in real time, been able to pull that information up right from a patrol car, right from a cell phone so that we can see what's going on, immediately broadcast that information out to the responding units as well as our investigators to give them one less thing to do on the front end that allows them to focus their attention on where they need to go in a faster manner. And we've been able to solve homicides, we've found missing persons, we've solved armed robberies, and you name it, a multitude of different crimes just by utilizing this technology with Connect Atlanta. So we want to continue to grow that network, so we thank you and we encourage all of our citizens, again, to register their cameras. And with the registration, it just simply means that you're telling us that we have a camera, and should there be a need to contact you electronically, and we will ask you for that footage that you have, if you have it. If you don't, no harm whatsoever, but we know that you exist and you could be of a benefit to your neighbors and any other person that may travel down there. And of course, with the integrations, focusing on our businesses, we sold external cameras and other entities that we can utilize when we're seeing crime trends in specific areas, it's certainly beneficial for us to have those integrations so that we can respond in an appropriate manner, such as when we had the incident in our Colony Square area of Peach Street and Fourteenth Street, those types of initiatives that really help us bring crimes to a swift resolution. With that being said, I believe that concludes the presentation, and of course, I'll be open for any and all questions that you may have.
Deputy Chief Peake, colleagues, if you'd like to ask any questions or make any comments, please indicate with your speaker button. First up is Councilmember Antonio Lewis.
Thank you, Deputy Chief Peake, for coming today. I appreciate all the service that our officers have been doing for us this time period. I think I was, today's rates are amazing compared to last year. I know when we came in here, we had Buckhead preparing to leave us. We had, because of crime, we had folks on the south side trying to figure out if they can annex out as well, if we can find out a way to be tougher or smarter on crime. I think we got smarter on crime, right? I think one of the smartest things, one of the smartest preventive measures that we used was the police turn on their lights at night. Lately, my residents have been saying they've been seeing police officers riding without their lights on at night. I've been riding down Metropolitan, we know we got this Zone Three police precinct. I have noticed that police officers have started back not turning their lights on at night, and these are some of the nicer cars, right? So I know they have the ability to do it. So I would like if you could put that message back out that we're doing well, crime is going down, don't revert back to the other stuff because we cut our lights back off, they won't see you anymore. They'll start back doing some of the other stuff that they were doing. So I would like to put that message out first, that we turn the lights back on at night.
Got it, got it.
The next one question I had was if there's a way we can add PAD to this report, and what I would like to see, if there's a way, if on Page Three, the page that we had, the person and property crime, if, or if on the page before, if there's a way I can just see, are people using PAD? Is the number going up for PAD? Because that could be what's decreasing crime a lot for us as well because police officers... I want to show the good work that officers are doing. I think that some of our police officers are calling PAD in the daytime, and I think that is actually reducing some of our violent crime numbers because they're not dealing with mental health issues. So I would like to know if we can add PAD to it. And lastly, I want to switch over to, well, two more things, of the club program. How are we paying for the clubs?
So we have, for the most part, it's been funded, a large portion of the actual automakers themselves... themselves, when we made contact to let them know the issues that we were seeing and how they could assist us with trying to reduce those numbers and to be able to keep those vehicles from being stolen. Pitching that idea with them, they were able to partner with us and so that's where we're going.
I love that. I love when we find ways to do stuff like that. I would want to say, I know that I've seen other cities mimic the paper that we passed here on the lock boxes, gun lock boxes. And a lot of folks have told me in other cities like Houston, they copied me, they reached out to me to ask me exactly what do we do to get that legislation done. They copied the legislation and their police officers brought them lock boxes to pass out. And so I want to know if there's a, I didn't even know that's where you were getting them from because I knew police officers had these connections. So I would like to know if we can add that request as well to the automakers if we can , because that would reduce crime in a major way with accidental gun shootings and different things. I've been talking to the Bass Reeves Gun Club a lot about it as well. So if we can add that request of lock boxes as well to keep folks safe in the city.
Right. And so what we, what, on the front end, what I probably wouldn't imagine is the automakers actually pitching in on that piece, but of course, those who make firearms perhaps, Glock and Smith &amp; Wesson and any other entities, that's something that we can try to pose and see if they are willing. So we'll take that back to the team and see what we're able to get, any way we can get it. And I shouldn't leave off that we have had some community members who have stepped up boldly and assisted us as well with some of the initiatives with the clubs and other entities, other issues as well. So we do have some great community members that are out here that are assisting us.
It's a group project, I just want to work, I just want to add the lock boxes to it because I know we're trying to, property, that's a property, the car, that's a property, we're saving the property, but folks are still stealing those guns.
Right, right. And more so than property, I look at it as a life-saving event because we're seeing too many weapons that are being stolen and are used in other crimes, even if we're looking at suicide or shootings at people. So we got to get a better handle on ensuring that we have our gun owners, be responsible gun owners and keep those weapons. So totally agree with you.
And I noticed about going through the presentation that you spent a lot of time in Zone 3. So I want to send a major shout out to Major Ricker because that means he's doing a lot of work. And some of that work is, looks like 2553 Jonesboro Road. And that was the illegal cars and illegal things, stolen materials. You said no one was arrested there. My question was, my question is, how do we find this lot? Was this just a code enforcement stumbled upon them or was?
So it was actually some information that came to an officer and so they went with a group of people out to investigate it with our Auto Crimes Enforcement Unit.
Okay.
So we often get those types of tips and when we get that information, we'll go out and look at it and see where the investigation takes us. On that particular one, it was initiated by the Auto Crimes Enforcement.
Sir, and so that's Auto Crime Enforcement?
ACE.
And that's code enforcement?
No, sir. No, sir. ACE is our Auto Crimes Unit. So they deal with auto thefts, they deal with car break-ins and they partner with our Larson &amp; Farm Auto Detectives. So anything related to car crimes, they're going to be all over it.
So with that, with code enforcement, had we increased code enforcement budget, if we hired the code enforcement officers, because this business has been there forever and I've been riding past it my entire life. So that means that they've probably been doing this for 50 years. And so my question is, if code enforcement, is this something that code enforcement would have saw had we had enough code enforcement officers? Because with 11, to find 11 cars and the owner has a story to give you already that says he's done this, would code enforcement be the arm that would find this for us or who would typically locate this for us? Because he had more than just stolen cars, he had stolen like, stolen stuff in track.
Right. So it just really depends and that's a hard question to ask on who would find it on the front end because we can get information from a number of ways. Code enforcement, unless it's something that just shocks the conscience when they see things, they historically just won't go to a business that's operating well and seems to be working within their realms of where they should be unless they actually see something that stands out. I know there are a lot of auto businesses down on that stretch.
All over there.
And so that's, for that, if it's nothing that's obvious to say that there is anything going on, usually it's a tip that takes place and with that tip, they'll open up an investigation and when we look at it on the front end, we will look and consider all entities that would be a part of that investigative team so that yes, we're going in it with auto crimes, but to your point, are there any code enforcement violations? Are there any other violations that we need to look at to bring any other entities into the investigation? So that's why it's still ongoing. So the fact that there's no arrest made at this point doesn't mean anything that we won't have one, but it takes more time to go back and look at it so that you can present a case to the court that's prosecutable, that'll be able to be prosecuted.
I would just, to leave, I would say, I think that code enforcement, had we had a code enforcement officer for that NPU in particular, because they've been complaining about the car dealerships all up metropolitan, all down Jonesboro Road for a long time. And so if we had a code enforcement officer for our area, I think they would have saw this with ease. And now I would actually encourage you to look at the rest of the car spaces around there because they all look like they do the same business.
Absolutely, absolutely. We'll certainly take that into account. Code enforcement, they are serving the entire city and so they're in Zone 3 with a strong footprint, but they're in every zone as well. So it depends on the complaints and so what we always do is when we see those issues, we encourage the citizens to give us a call because it's our citizens, those are the eyes and ears that we need to get the information and know where our focus needs to be, if not for that day or that week or that month, whatever that looks like.
Thank you again Deputy Pete, thank you. I appreciate you for the service. I can't wait to see next year. The numbers may not go down as much next year because we're going to plateau. I think that the job that y'all are doing is going to be amazing and the numbers, next year, I know we are going to be bragging about our huge reduced, reduction in crime and violent crime, but I think this is going to be the new norm of a lesser amount of violent crime. And so next year, the number, the decrease may not look so good and people may say you're only down 1%, but we always want to look at what we did last year. So I appreciate you and the service that y'all put in.
Absolutely. And if I close out with that, and thank you so much for that recognition, we couldn't do it without our partners, so certainly want to go on record and thank our Fulton County District Attorney's Office, the Fulton County Solicitor's Office, City of Atlanta Solicitor's Office, all of our partners. We can't do it alone, so when we reach across the entire public safety arena, when we're talking about the criminal justice system, when we work collectively together, synchronized manner, we're able to get those better results. So certainly we'll take that word back to the team. Thank you.
Councilmember Bond.
Yes, thank you. I would like to thank everyone who was responsible for all of the great strides, for the Cascade skating rink issue, the young man that was gunned down there. They have an active warrant for that suspect, so thank you all for that wonderful, wonderful work. And also to pal, Councilmember Norwood and myself and Councilmember Overstreet are prepared to donate gowns. Councilmember Norwood has already turned hers in. So the prom project that you all have with young women that need prom gowns, we really are appreciative of that effort. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your partnership and your donation and I know the young ladies will look forward to those and probably the young men as well, so thank you.
Councilmember Waits.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Chief Pete, thank you for the presentation today. I appreciate the numbers. The rear, where the average age of the arrest is 43 versus 12 and 16, so I'm encouraged to see those numbers. Last week, we had the opportunity to honor Officer Coach alone. This was the one that was catastrophically injured many, many years ago and so that was very special to honor women and veteran trailblazers. My question to you, and you and I have discussed this before regarding Brittany Glover, the young woman that was killed in a fatality in a pedestrian intersection, I was wondering if, one, there were any leads on that and, two, is there an opportunity to create a canvassing campaign in that area? Because there is a huge residential community across the street where someone has to have possibly a ring or some type of camera footage. So, and then thirdly, the mother indicated that there was some efforts to do a posting on Crime Stoppers, but that has somehow also went dry. So I'd love to talk offline about what provisions we can provide the Glover family in terms of an advocacy campaign or raising awareness for any footage, because it's been six months now since her death and my thought is, we want to lean forward and make sure that we're doing everything to support the family. So I would be grateful for any feedback regarding Brittany Glover as well as any plans to redesign that corridor regarding traffic fatalities that are happening in that area.
Chief, a few issues, or a few questions rather. Speaking on the drastic increase in auto thefts, a few questions about that. Number one, you acknowledge that Kias and Hyundai's are accounting for almost 50% of the total auto thefts in the city. A number of cities, local governments across the county, or across the country have active lawsuits against those companies. One thing that I've requested through the Law Department is not just these raw numbers, but you know, what is the, out of these, you could count the total 419 or you could say, you know, the difference between last year and this year's 400 and, or excuse me, 370 auto thefts? So what increased cost of that is, is that to APD and really not just APD, but everyone in the city? I mean, from the 911 dispatcher that picks up the phone to the initial officer that goes out to taking the, hopefully, an arrestee to Fulton County or ACDC, having an officer go to court, et cetera. So what's the total cost of, you know, of APD responding to one auto theft? Then we can calculate that number to see what, you know, damages have been done to the city due to the failure of this automaker to address this. This has been going on for at least a year. They, I know, because my family has a Kia that does not have, it's not a newer model and it's been over a year and still no fix. So you know, glad they're giving a little $50 piece of equipment to the city to hand out, but that is going to address the damages we've already incurred from these additional 370 auto thefts just in this first, I guess this first quarter of the year. So is that something, we have asked for that number from APD, so is that something that is being worked on?
I'll follow up with the Chief of Staff and see if we can figure that piece out. I had not received that specific request myself, but I'll certainly go back and look at it and see what we're able to determine, if we can put a live figure to what those responses look like.
And then speaking to the point that was made by Councilmember Lewis, whether it is the home that we don't, you're not disclosing the address of yet, or the, looks like scrapyard out on Jonesboro Road, you know, I know what you all's responsibility is, at least, you know, FOD and ACE, but not just code enforcement, but how are you all working with either the city attorney's office, the solicitor's office, or DA Willis and going after these properties, to take these properties which are being used for the commission of felonies?
Right. So our normal situation, when we get a complaint like such, we start going back and looking at the premise history to see what the history looks like. Have they been hit before through ways of search warrants? If so, what's the process with the cease and desist? Were we able to locate the owner versus the renter there? Did the owner take action to remove the renter and that issue is no longer on the table? We look at all of those situations, we look at it and if it looks like we have an owner who's absentee and just not doing anything with the property, then we'll get with the Law Department, we'll get with Solicitor's Office, whatever that entity is to come up with that cease and desist letter to have it sent out. If we can locate that owner and based off of that, start the process for forfeiting that property and seizing it, working with the District Attorney's Office. So yes, that is a process that we do. I don't have the specific data on these specific properties, but we can look at that and get with you offline and let you know if it's anything that we've dealt with previously.
I would just like to see not just these two properties that you pointed out today, but over the, maybe 22 so far in 2023, the total number of properties that you all have either referred to the city attorney or the solicitor's office or the DA is for possible action. Because you know, we get informed of drug houses and you all hit them two, three, four times and they're still in the same owner's possession. And so I, since it's, I'm on that page right now, Captain Baxter looks anxious to speak. So can you give us any specifics on whether there's an active case, code enforcement case against this? Because I mean, without knowing the zoning of the property offhand, you know, this could be code enforcement issues, zoning issues, et cetera.
Right. So good afternoon, esteemed councilmembers, Mr. Hillis. So when it comes to commercial property, so commercial property falls under zoning. So zoning has the primary responsibility for responding to complaints when it comes to auto body shops, commercial properties, et cetera. So if somebody called to complain via a commercial property, via 311, that would be vetted through zoning. Now zoning picked up on any thing that would fall into the realm of code enforcement, then we would be alerted to that, we could do a joint detail together. But in a nutshell, when it comes to commercial property, that would be a zoning domain.
On the, back to the auto thefts, you're providing citywide numbers, but it looks like when you look at the Zone numbers, six is doing more than leading the increase. I think they're at or above 100% increase. And then I think it's three and is it four or five that is behind them? So why, why is it concentrated on that kind of side of the city? Is there known operatives over there that you all are tracking or?
So I misspoke when I said five, but particularly as we look at Zone 6, one of the areas that we know speaks 605, 607, I believe those two beats, which are Grant Park back down to Woodland Hills or the southern end of Zone 6. That's where we're seeing the most activity. We're also seeing some over where we say 609, which is over in the Edgewood, Kirkwood area. So what we're doing is having those conversations, following the recovery locations, working with the Cab County Police Department as well, because we know that there are a lot of the issues are right on the jurisdictional boundaries. So working with them to follow the intel to see what's happening. Yes, there are some issues that are gang related, some of it is juvenile related, where they may steal a vehicle and go right around the block and abandon that car. So whether it's for fun or whatever the case might be, looking at it from a larger scale and as we've just moved into utilizing this new technology with Peregrine to really look at it, find out what's happening, who's responsible. So we're making a larger, taking a larger look at all of those to determine what's happening with it. We've made a number of arrests, but there's still a number of thefts that are going on. And so Major Webster has been at the front of trying to ensure that we have the resources. I know they just conducted a detail over there last week. I don't have the results of that yet. I believe that detail took place on Friday, so that they are certainly aware of it and doing all they can to bring it to a resolution.
And one knowledge, we've been joined by Councilmember Bond. Councilmember Lewis, you wanted to speak again?
When I heard you asking questions, I wanted, and talked about ACE, I've been on, spending too much time on social media and in these social media posts I'm seeing, I want to ask, does APD chase? Do we still have our no chase policy or do we have a no chase policy?
So no, we have a policy, we can chase, but there are specific parameters that govern when we will engage in a chase. Forcible felonies is the main thing. If we have an absolute certainty that forcible felony has taken place and at the time that the person is driving that vehicle is responsible, then we will pursue that vehicle. But what we don't pursue is for smaller crimes, misdemeanors, property crimes where there's no life at, you know, nobody's losing their lives or anything like such. Historically, you look at it and we've, our policy is basically one of the model policies through the major city chiefs and ICP and other entities to where we look at, what are we subjecting our community to for such a low-level issue? But we can chase, we do chase when there are issues, even as we look at the position immobilized. When there are issues, even as we look at the positioning, immobilization, immobilization technique, the pit maneuvers, when we have a crime worthy enough for us to utilize the technology, we do. But we make sure that we supervise it closely so that we're not putting the officers, as well as the citizens or anybody else, at unnecessary harm or the city at any unnecessary liability.
I would, is, I'm just trying to see that, because on Metropolitan Parkway, there was a chase the other day. They made social media and I saw so many cars, so many innocent civilians that going to and from working District 12. And I saw Georgia State get behind them, and I saw APD follow closely enough behind to be a part of telling. And so I'm a little nervous when I see police riding through Metropolitan Parkway and Jonesboro Road and Cleveland Avenue, chasing kids, right? We're talking about high school students, 15, 16 years old. And so that's what I saw, that's what I saw. And so I'm hopeful that now I know why we chase, we chase after we think it's a major crime. And so I'll look into it, because if it was just a taillight and the person pulled off, we just talked about our camera connecting system. We can use the cameras to follow them, we can put a drone on them and follow them. If we running, but driving 100 miles per hour down Metropolitan Parkway, chasing a 15-year-old that we know don't got a license, don't know how to control that car, and then doing a pit maneuver, I, I can't stand for that in District 12. Similar to how I can't stand for police officers from District 12 being at the public safety training facility.
So, so what I would say is that by no means do we engage in any activity where we just chase kids. We will pursue a criminal that's involved in a felony and that it's well worth it. And, and so same, anytime we utilize our resources, we don't just utilize resources based off of what we just feel we want to use them for. We utilize them because it's a proven fact that we have life-saving issues that we have to deploy our people to ensure that we protecting the life and liberty of others. And so we're very thoughtful of what we do. And so whether that be the pursuit policy, whether it be the deployment of troops in any particular area within the city of Atlanta, or through our mutual aid partners, when there's a need to uphold the Constitution of the United States, when there's a need to protect the life and liberty of our general citizen repopulation, we will utilize our resources to do so.
It scares me when I see police chasing folks. I'm more afraid of the police car that's behind the car than I am the car. Because the first car goes past and then I see police and I see more than one police car chasing behind. So I'm nerd, I'm, as a citizen, I'm getting a little nervous when I see two, three police cars chasing behind another car. And I would just, I agree with you, my, my hope is that similar to the message of asking folks to cut their lights back on, because I think that's part of how crime went down. I would like if we can just go to roll call and just say, hey, y'all, let's not, let's make sure that when we chase, that we make sure that we, it's a reason for we chasing. And I'm not saying that they, that they aren't doing it for the right reasons, but I would just like for us to just amp that conversation up a little bit.
Right, absolutely. It's, it's a part of every roll call for the most part. They constantly go over those things. Being a near 30-year veteran and being in a number of police chases myself, it's not a simple thing to do, it requires a skill, but it's, it's a very uneasy thing to deal with, and it's nothing that any officer wants to do, but there are those few times where you have to do what you have to do to get that person off the street, and it's usually a very serious felony.
Now, I'm speaking as a person who's been chased by the police in a car before, right?
Uh oh.
And so I'm speaking as a person who, I live, I'm from over there. And so we know that, that ain't, that, that, I, I'm not speaking as a person. That's why I say, can we just uplift it?
Yes, absolutely.
Because I'm watching that, and like, I'm getting the calls. I know people that are getting chased in cars just because they are young, driving the car.
Absolutely.
When I got chased, they are, look young, four people in the car, they getting chased. I'm talking to the kids. They ain't, they ain't get caught or doing nothing.
Understood, I receive it.
That's what I would like to take to the calls, like, hey, and, and let's get them later on. I know we got cameras, I trust the camera system, because we're asking, we're encouraging. The, the one slide that every single police officer, every single report that we see is this piece, right? Keep us safe, the camera piece.
Absolutely.
So I trust these cameras a little bit. Let's call, let's get on the, let's use the technology to chase them. Let's chase them with a drone, or with technology, just pick them up down the street. Because chasing down, that chase down Metropolitan, a lot of cars got hit on some young boys. They ain't, they didn't kill nobody or rob nobody to get chased. They got chased because they seen some young people in the car.
And that's the partnership to the schools, which is why we have to spend so much time in the schools to change the trajectory and the decision-making of our youth. So I agree with you, we got to reach out and touch our youth to ensure that they make better decisions as well, and so that we can keep everybody safe.
I'm doing that too.
Thank you.
Doing both sides, but I'm gonna make sure I say this, I'm, I got them, got them on that side too.
Thank you, thank you, we need it.
Thank you.
Our colleagues, any other questions or comments for Deputy Chief? All right.
Thank you all.
All right, next up is our Department of Law Quarterly Update, Nina Hickson, our City Attorney. I'm Ms. Hickson, I need to put you on the timer, you got a, we got a copy of War and Peace up here.
Yeah, we won't read all of it. Good afternoon. I'm Nina Hickson, City Attorney, City of Atlanta. Have had the honor of serving in that capacity since May of 2018.
Hold your mic down a little bit, please.
Provide a brief presentation of the work done by the Department of Law during the second quarter fiscal year '23. We're going to start with a report from the Transportation, Public Works, and SAVE team, which is led by Stephanie Grant, Division Chief. Stephanie has been an attorney with the city for over 25 years. She will enter, she will introduce her team to include Sandra Stevens, who has also been with the city over 25 years and is an integral part of the team. Stephanie?
Thank you, Ms. Hickson. Good afternoon. Good afternoon, Chair Hillis and members of the committee. As Ms. Hickson said, my name is Stephanie Grant. I'm here to provide you with a brief overview of the contribution that the Transportation, Public Works, and SAVE team makes to the City of Atlanta Department of Law by providing an overview of the work that we do. So as Ms. Hickson said, I'm Stephanie Grant. I have been with the city, as a matter of fact, just last week, I celebrated my anniversary. I've now been with the city for 27 years. Thank you. Thank you. I am a graduate of Texas A&amp;M University undergrad. I received my JD from Georgia State University. I've been with the department, with the city for 27 years and with the Department of Law for 25. My team, oh, I am so sorry. I'm sorry. So my team consists of Ms. Lauren Clayton, who is Senior Attorney on my team. Lauren is a undergraduate, received her undergraduate degree from Berkeley, a Masters from UGA, and her JD from GS, Georgia State University. Ms. Clayton has been practicing for over 10 years. She, including a stint as being a former senior solicitor in the municipal court, and she was a land use attorney for a private firm. The next attorney on my team is Ms. Catherine Jane, she prefers to go by Kit. Kit is an undergraduate, has an undergraduate degree from Rutgers University, a Masters from Emory, and a JD from Berkeley. So you see, I got two Berkeley grads on my team. Ms. Jane has been practicing law for approximately six years, including a corporate law from a big firm in San Francisco, and then securities law here locally in Atlanta before coming to the Law Department. And certainly last but not least, Ms. Sandra Stevens, who Ms. Hickson has already told you, has been with the Law Department for over 25 years. Ms. Stevens is our Corporate Legislative Analyst on our team. She is a, she received her undergraduate degree from Georgia State University while employed with the Department of Law. So Sandra is an integral part of our, our team. She has legal experience with private practice with a bankruptcy attorney prior to Department of Law. So the areas of responsibility for my team include representation, advice, and counsel for the Atlanta Department of Transportation, Department of Public Works, and we also supervise the SAVE and E-Verify program. So one of the things that we do in our work for the Department of Transportation, we monitor the due compensation that is required from telecom companies who utilize the rights of way of the City of Atlanta. Many of you may know that the state requires the city to allow telecom companies to utilize the rights of way. However, in order to do that, they must provide due compensation to the city. The state law sets a minimum due compensation recovery of 3% of local recurring revenue. And so it came to our attention that there were two companies that were not providing the City of Atlanta with due compensation. So our team diligently pursued those two telecom providers that were in violation of the Georgia due compensation requirements to remit payments to the city. And by aggressively demanding the amounts owed, we, our team recovered over $96,000 from one telecom company and $37,000 from another telecom provider. The Department of Law will continue to pursue those telecom companies that fail to submit timely and accurate due compensation payments. Another project that our team worked on, I believe all of you are familiar with the Light Up the Night Streetlight Project. Our team took the lead on negotiating the terms of the agreement that allowed Georgia Power Company to purchase and service over 9,000 City of Atlanta-owned streetlights, transferring that ownership and maintenance of the responsibility of the streetlights allows for greater visibility on right-of-way across the city, furthering Mayor Dickens' goal of reducing crime and traffic accidents in identified high-neat neighborhoods where the lights are at it, and also reducing the city's energy costs and carbon footprint. Another major, another major initiative of our team was that we led the negotiation and execution of the multiple complex agreements for the implementation of the CID procurement process. We're calling that CIDP, which we allow, the city has allowed CIDs to manage their procurement process and project delivery according to certain qualifications and performance criteria. CIDP now allows the city to save valuable procurement resources, reallocating internal project management's resources to allow for faster project delivery for partnerships and partnership projects under the Moving Atlanta Forward Program. And our team is also responsible for managing the Citywide SAVE and E-Verify Program. SAVE stands for the Systematic Alien Verification of Entitlements Program, and ensures that only applicants who are eligible for public benefits actually receive them. SAVE incorporates privacy principles and security measures into the city's processes and procedures as well as maintaining program integrity. The Department of Law provides annual training for all City of Atlanta departments, and we are also responsible for filing annual compliance reports with the state of Georgia. Our Corporate Legislative Analyst, Ms. Stevens, takes the lead on the administrative functions associated with the SAVE and E-Verify Program. Oh, and I'm sorry, E-Verify helps protect the city from document and identity fraud in the employment arena while ensuring a safe and legal workforce for the city of, for the city and compliance with federal law. I'm sure you're aware from Ms. Hickson's mission statement, we are determined to be a best-in-class law department. And as a best-in-class law department, we not only represent our clients in advice and counsel, we also engage the local legal community to, to increase our presence in the local legal community. And so in association with, with that, our Law Department has enjoyed a longstanding partnership with the Georgia Municipal Association. I have personally just concluded three years of service on the GMA Board of Directors, where in last summer, I presided over the GMA City Attorney's CLE and luncheon. As an active participant of the GMA Board, I represented the city as the President of the City Attorney's Section, and I was a member of GMA's Legal Defense Fund Committee. And so that allowed me to see, have an opportunity to see how other local municipal governments, from small, medium, and large, comport themselves throughout the state of Georgia. And so briefly, so briefly, that is just a quick summary of some of the work that we do for the City of Atlanta. Now, as I said, I've been here for a while. It kind of slipped my attention and was brought to my attention by someone who was on my team, who was on board it during the pandemic, that it makes a lot of sense to understand what your clients do in, in real life and in the field, so that you can get a better understanding for the workflow that's coming across your, your desk. So to that extent, we decided to partner with Atlanta DOT, and we had a site visit in February of 2022. And so we visited the Claire Drive facility, and we've visited North Avenue. And this is a very, very brief video, 45 seconds, showing our site visit to ATL DOT facilities. And so after our tour, it was important for us to make sure that not only did we have an understanding of actual inner workings of our clients, we also made sure that we had an opportunity for team building within the Law Department. And so our fellow members of the operations team, who you'll recognize here as Rob Moses and Spencer Peck on the watershed team. We just took a little photo during one of our team visit, sorry, team building opportunities. And with that, if you have no questions for me, I will turn it over to Ms. Hickson. Thank you.
Councilmember Hillis, I did hear you, so we will not do the entire report. I would, however, like to focus on Pages Four and Five since it mentions individual team members, and I think they should at least get their, their due. Page four, we feature Attorney Shamia Washington, who was elected Chair, or Vice Chair of the Friendship Club, Attorney Rob Moses, who is a guest lecturer on environmental law, and actually will be serving as an adjunct professor for Georgia State University in that, in that capacity. Also, Attorney Mutman Islam was a featured speaker at the National Association of Bond Lawyers. If we could move to the next slide. Lauren Clayton was elected to the Grant Park Conservancy. Kit Jane was a volunteer with the Mayor's 5K. And then Jesse Dagan was an international delegate for Human Trafficking Conference that was held at Hartsfield-Jackson Atlanta International Airport. The rest of the report, we've provided to you, and if anybody who is listening to this wishes to get a copy, if you'll just wishes to get a copy, if you'll just reach out to the law department, we'll be glad to share it with you. Our statistics or our metrics are featured on pages seven, eight, 14, 17, 20, 26, 27, 37, 38, and pages 41 through 44. At this time, if there are any questions, I'm happy to respond to them.
Thank you, Ms. Hixson. Councilmember Lewis.
Attorney Hixson, I want to say thank you for the work that you've been doing the past. I think you've hired really well. The eagerness and the commitment from your team, I was able to witness last Friday at 3:30 PM, when everybody else was headed to other places, when I was able to see every staff attorney in the City of Atlanta that was supposed to be there, listening, giving advice and asking questions. I actually see you, you all put the work together, so I appreciate you for the service, and I appreciate you for hiring well. And the question that I had was, actually, I should have asked it a little earlier, was around the telecom funding. And does that go to the general fund, or does that go to People TV?
Terrifying.
Okay, so, I think a couple of the questions that People TV have asked me have always been around the telecom funding, and them not getting their fair share.
And I, I think what you're referring to are the funds that come from our Comcast agreement. And so, that's a little different from where people use our right-of-ways to lay fiber or wire, whatever they're laying.
All right, I appreciate you. I think y'all, your, your job as an attorney is to advise us to stop us from doing crazy stuff.
I do the best I can.
I think that, I, I think that, I appreciate y'all for, even whenever you tell me no, that we can't do stuff. I appreciate you telling me no, right? So, keep it going, continue to be transparent, continue to give us those big files when you come to give a report. Make us say, don't do the whole report. Thank you again.
Okay.
Councilmember Waits.
Thank you so much. Attorney Hixson, thank you for the report and all you do for us. I have a question. We have, at least I have received numerous emails, probably hundreds, from advocates that somehow believe that there is a possibility to renegotiate the IGA agreement regarding the geodynamic. And I guess there's some provisions in there where they're indicating that the lease could possibly be altered or changed. Can you speak to that? Because there is a feeling that legally, that we have breached something, or there was not any due diligence done surrounding this agreement. And I'm not speaking to the political components, but I'm speaking to this notion somehow that certain council members have the authority to go back and amend the lease or make changes to that. Is there a possibility to do that? What is the actual truth?
All right. I'm aware of a conversation and coverage related to the ground lease at the Atlanta Public Safety Training Center. And there's an attorney, and I provided you all a, a legal memorandum in response to certain statements that were made by that attorney. First of all, what we're talking about is a ground lease, which is different from a commercial lease or a, an apartment lease. It's a tool, it's a development tool that is used, where in exchange for the lessor providing the services to develop the property, eventually goes back to the owner. That's what we're dealing with. So, there are certain aspects of that, which the attorney who has spoken on it has not addressed, because she's not speaking to a ground lease in particular. As relates to this issue of termination, certainly the lease, the ground lease, has provisions that allow termination. The distinction, and it's a very nuanced one, is that the city council in and of itself cannot terminate the lease. The city council authorized the mayor to enter into it, and he entered into that. There are grounds for termination, but you all could not just say, well, we're going to terminate the lease. So, that was the distinction, but it's been characterized as a saying that the city can't terminate the lease, which is not true. City can't terminate the lease for cause, and, you know, but for the right reason. But at this juncture, the, the fine point is the council can't just decide it's going to terminate the lease, and that was what the explanation that's been given to council members has been. So, I'm, I'm aware of those discussions. As relates to the IGA and ACDC, I think that's another discussion. I'm not aware of what issues have been raised along those lines, but we amend IGAs all the time, so I don't know that there's anything that, that precludes an amendment to an IGA.
Thank you so much for your indulgence. And the last piece is that there was a stop-work order that was given from DeKalb County, and that we're in breach of the stop-work order with the continuance.
That's not true. There was a request for a stop-work order. That request was denied. And so, now that particular matter is being appealed to their equivalent of the ZBA, but BC, I'm sorry, BZA in DeKalb County. So, that's pending, and there are attorneys dealing with that. There was also a request that EPD issue an individual permit, as opposed to the general permit. EPD denied that request. That particular matter is now being appealed and is being handled by attorneys on, on both sides. So, there hasn't been a stop-work order issued. There was a request for one, but it was denied.
Final question, please. The, the notion that there are human remains there, and that there are environmental concerns that have been ignored and not been addressed, has that issue ever come up?
It has come up, but it is not, the, the human remains part has not come up in the context of the current request for stop-work order or the EPD. EPD would say that they have done their due diligence as relates to the environmental matters that are there. In terms of the thought of there being remains, that has not come up.
Councilmember Bond.
Yes, thank you, attorney. Just, again, the weekend work that you all do responding, not just to us, but when citizens need help, you all have made yourselves readily available, and that is appreciated. And this video was a great job. Great job, great report. Thank you all so much for your diligence.
Councilmember Bond.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Madam City Attorney and your staff, for your very able and thorough presentation. I just had a question, and this relates, going back to the claims. Do you all do workshops or briefings with the departments that are more prone to have claims filed against them in an attempt to try to help them not commit those things that would result in claims?
I cannot say that we've done that since I've been here. We have, we will raise the issues with our clients. You know, each, each department has advice and counsel. And so, to the extent that we can provide some insight into the claims or the issues that we run into, we do share that. But that really is a good idea. We don't, we haven't done that since I've been here, in terms of doing a workshop or anything to talk about prevention.
And this is something I think that you and Ms. Robinson probably could respond to. Do Ares rule the world?
Absolutely.
Absolutely. Thank you, Madam City Attorney. I was wrong.
Colleagues, any other questions or comments for our city attorney? All right, thank you so much, Ms. Hixson.
Thank you.
All right, that brings us to our consent agenda. Resolutions with favorable and unfavorable claims. I'll make a motion to accept all the favorable claims, items one through seven. Is there a second? Second, my councilmember Bond, please prepare the vote.
The vote is open. Please vote. The vote is closed.
Five yeas, zero nays. Those items are favorable. I'll make a motion to adverse all unfavorable claims, eight through 42. Is there a second? Second, my councilmember Norwood, please prepare the vote.
The vote is open. Please vote. The vote is recording. Mr. Chair, may we take a boys' vote, please?
All in favor, or all in favor of adversely availing these claims, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Or yeas, zero nays? Let's close and restart it, so we can...
Thank you for having me. Yes, Mr. Chair?
Motion to bring forth a substitute. Second, my councilmember Norwood, please prepare the vote.
The vote is closed.
Five yeas, zero nays. Substitute is before us.
Yes. An ordinance by councilmember Matt Westmoreland is substituted by the Public Safety and Legal Administration Committee. An ordinance to amend Chapter... An ordinance to amend Chapter 10, Section 10-92B of the City of Atlanta Code of Ordinances so as to provide an exemption from the distance requirements for package stores licensed to sell malt beverages and/or wine by the package listed in Section 10-88.1 of the City of Atlanta Code of Ordinances for one package store located at 1317 North Highland Avenue Northeast, Atlanta, Georgia, 30306, and for the purposes.
I have a motion to hold by councilmember Norwood, which I will second. Please prepare the vote.
Mr. Chairman, I had asked to speak to this.
Okay, go ahead.
Yes, sir. Is there a reason why we just can't move this based upon conditions, given the two-week recess and the amount of time that's been spent on this legislation?
That's what the author requested, so I'm respecting the author's wishes.
Okay, thank you.
The vote is open. The vote is closed.
Five yeas, zero nays, one abstention. Moving on to resolutions, 32, R. 3324.
A resolution by councilmember Michael Julian Bond authorizing the reemployment of City of Atlanta Department of Corrections employees Arlene Murray, Correction ID Technician, and Valerie Jerry, Office Support Assistant, senior under Section 3-505A of the Charter of the City of Atlanta, and for the purposes.
Motion to approve. Is there a second? Second, my councilmember Bond, please prepare the vote.
The vote is open. The vote is closed.
Five yeas, zero nays. That item is approved. Item 23R. 3327, understand we have a substitute?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Can I bring the substitute forward? Is there a second?
Second.
Second, my councilmember Norwood, please prepare the vote.
The vote is open. The vote is closed.
Five yeas, zero nays. Substitute is before us.
A resolution by councilmember Antonio Lewis is substituted by the Public Safety and Legal Administration Committee. A resolution requesting the Chief Judge of the Municipal Court of Atlanta, the Municipal Court Administrator, and the City Solicitor to coordinate with the City of Atlanta Department of Law to establish and promulgate a process which persons who have been charged with nonviolent offenses in the Municipal Court of Atlanta may officially seek the restriction of the records of these offenses in accordance with state law and for other purposes.
Motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, my councilmember Boone. I think you're on here. Yeah, you?
The vote is open. The vote is closed.
Five yeas, zero nays. That item is favorable on substitute. Item 23R. 3328.
A resolution by councilmembers Antonio Lewis, Byron Amos, Jason Dozier, Andrea Elboon, Marcy Collier Overstreet, Michael Julian Bond, Keisha Shawn Waite urging the Georgia General Assembly to pass legislating, legislation creating a clean slate law which will provide certain nonviolent individuals the opportunity to have their records expunged or sealed and for the purposes.
I'll make a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, my councilmember Bond, please prepare the vote.
The vote is open. The vote is closed.
Five yeas, zero nays. That item is favorable. 23R. 3331.
A resolution by councilmember Dustin Hillis authorizing the settlement of all claims against the City of Atlanta in the case of Roosevelt Council Junior, Chief Revenue Collector of the City of Atlanta versus all that tract of parcel of land known as 1329 Gun Club Road. All persons or entities holding any right, title, or interest in said property, Superior Court of Fulton County Civil Action File Number 2021 CV 353262, in the amount of $60,000. Authorizing said amount to be paid as follows in the count numbers listed herein, authorizing the chief financial officer to distribute the total settlement amount and for the purposes.
This should have been captured in the settlement, so if you can go ahead and read 48, 49, and 50 as well.
Forty-eight and forty-nine, Mr. Chair. Fifty is a different one that will be read individually. A resolution by Public Safety and Legal Administration Committee authorizing the settlement of all claims against defendant City of Atlanta in the case of Trevor McCagge versus City of Atlanta, Civil Action File Number 21 EV 005340, pending in the State Court of Fulton County, Georgia, in the amount of $60,000. Authorizing the settlement amount to be charged to and paid from the account numbers listed herein, authorizing the chief financial officer to distribute the settlement amount and for the purposes. A resolution by Public Safety and Legal Administration Committee authorizing the settlement of all claims against the City of Atlanta in the case of Chasten, Dallas versus City of Atlanta, Civil Action File Number 20 EV 001819, Fulton County State Court, in the amount of $50,000. Authorizing said amount to be paid from the account numbers listed herein, authorizing the chief financial officer to distribute the total settlement amount and for the purposes.
Motion to approve those three items. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, my councilmember Norwood, please prepare the vote.
The vote is open. The vote is closed.
Five yeas, zero nays. Those three items are favorable. 23R. 3378.
A resolution by Public Safety and Legal Administration Committee authorizing the mayor or his desert need to execute the First Amendment to Agreement CPG 1200163 Cooperative Purchasing Agreement pursuant to Section 2-1601 of the City of Atlanta Code of Ordinances, utilizing U.S. Communities Government Purchase Alliance Contract Number 42356 with Premier U.S. Food Incorporated for the purchase of food, paper, disposables, small wares, equipment, tabletop, and related products and services on behalf of the Department of Corrections at the Atlanta Police Department as an authorized user in an amount not to exceed $65,000 annually. All contracted work will be paid to and charged from the account numbers listed herein and for other purposes.
To approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, my councilmember Bond, please prepare the vote.
The vote is open. The vote is closed.
Five yeas, zero nays. That item is favorable. Item 51 and 52 are both having to do with previous settlements, so we can read those in together, please.
Yes, Mr. Chair. A resolution by Public Safety and Legal Administration Committee to amend Resolution Number 23R. 3287 and authorizing payment in the amount of $23,000 in settlement of the property damage of Dominic Jamerson against the City of Atlanta and for other purposes. A resolution by Public Safety and Legal Administration Committee to rescind Resolution Number 22R. 4736 and authorizing payment in the amount of $13,000 in settlement of the property damage claim of Cecilia Glanton against the City of Atlanta and for other purposes.
Motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, my councilmember Norwood, please prepare the vote.
The vote is closed.
Five yeas, zero nays. Those two items are favorable. Now to handle our paper that was sent back by the full council for whatever reason did not end up on our agenda, so we're going to treat it as a walk-in. Read that in, please.
Mr. Chair, I'd also like to announce that 23R. 3328 was a dual-referee paper and will be forwarded to FEC.
Thank you.
2301127, an ordinance by councilmembers Matt Westmoreland, Liliana Batiari, Amir Faroki, Howard Shook, Andrea Elboon, Marcy Collier Overstreet, Antonio Lewis, Jason Winston, and Michael Julian Bond, as substituted and amended by Public Safety and Legal Administration Committee, authorizing the contribution of a total amount not to exceed $1,616,603.0 to the Atlanta Fire Rescue Foundation to support improvements and upgrades in fire stations across Atlanta, authorizing the chief financial officer to transfer funds from the count numbers listed herein and for other purposes.
I have an amendment for this. The amendment will be under District 9, amending the amount to, from $225,000 to $100,000. Under District 11, amending that amount from $150,000 to $100,000. And then under District 12, amending the amount from $150,000 to $100,000. And then also amending the amount as to whatever new total amount is in the caption of the legislation. So I'll make a motion for that amendment. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, my councilmember Bond, please prepare the vote on that amendment.
The vote is open. The vote is closed.
Five yeas, zero nays. That item is amended. I will make a motion to approve as amended. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, my councilmember Bond, please prepare the vote.
The vote is open. The vote is closed.
Five yeas, zero nays. That item is favorable as amended. Councilmember Norwood, you wish to speak on this item?
Yes, I just wanted to say the reason I'm not part of this paper is the fire department will be getting a brand-new fire station to the tune of $13 million in my district. So it is a major part of the bond funds that are coming to District 8.
Councilmember Norwood, any other legislative items?
No, Mr. Chair.
That completes our legislative agenda. Colleagues, any announcements, questions, comments, well wishes? All right. If not, we are adjourned by unanimous considered members present. Thank you.